Wonderful town we serve and employees we have. We ask you to be with us tonight as we make the decisions that affect all of those rest these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
William Ellis?
Here.
Trevor Sager? Dan Swaffer?
Here.
Approval of minutes for the regular meeting, October 28th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
Opposed, now abstained. Okay. Expend counts payable vouchers and payroll.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Next is the award for the bid for the Heritage Trail Restrooms. Are we pushing on that?
Um, that's in error.
I was...
Oh. Is that the restrooms that's being built?
Yeah, it was on a previous agenda.
That's okay.
Because I did not understand when I... I did not understand the difference between a quote and a bid. And so when I was looking at previous agendas...
No worries. Um, since it appears on here as a bid opening, is there a motion to table this?
What do we need to table or, I mean?
Move this dragon.
Strike, yeah.
It's not necessary, period.
Okay.
Oh, second to strike. Or not necessary for anything, Darla?
Correct.
Okay, so no motion, alright.
Uh, next is resolutions versus resolution 35-2024 to expand the INPRS cover position, a new position of the Planning Tech Utilities Billing Clerk. This is Indiana Retirement System.
Correct. And so if you remember correctly, we've had to do this once before here recently when we had the High Tech's Crime Unit Director. It's just because the... this previous position has not been a position that was covered under our retirement plan. So this resolution is to expand to cover that position.
Okay. Questions, comments from council? Is there a motion?
So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So the position is already filled, correct?
The town council approved of the hiring of it, correct? So I had to wait until the town council approved the hiring of the position in order to submit to the council the resolution, in order to submit it to perf. And then their board will approve it after the town council has approved it.
And the person has only started though, correct?
Yes.
So do we have to take this back or just approve it from here?
Well, I can explain that.
Yeah.
So the process will start with this. We have to expand it first. And then I'm filling out after the town council approves expanding it. Then I put in the date of hire. And then INPRS will do a look back to see if we would like to purchase service time. And at that time I will bring it back before the council before that happens.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? motions from council concerning this resolution?
I move we approve resolution 35-2024 to expand the INPRS to cover the new position of Planning Tech Utilities Billing Clerk.
Second.
Motion's second. Roll call please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swaffer?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Under ordinances on first reading this evening is ordinance 2024-26 to amend ordinance 2001-25 receipt and claims policy clarification.
Yes, so the previous ordinance was in 2001. And there's been some guidance from State Board of Accounts that has come down to really clarify for missing receipts and what the process is for that. So I asked Darla for her guidance to create this ordinance.
Questions from council even though this is only ordinances on first reading?
So how often does this happen, will we?
It's hard to give specific like amounts. It could be a gas receipt that's left in a windshield. And if it's left there, sometimes the ink will disappear. This just really clarifies what the steps are in order to get the claim paid so it doesn't impede the department heads.
Sometimes you go through to pay for parking and it doesn't give you a receipt, something like that.
So but later do you have to find the receipt or?
If they do find it, they can turn it in and that is definitely...
But for the State Board of Accounts, does it eventually have to be there or?
No, because the affidavit and the way that this new ordinance is gonna read, it will cover a lost receipt.
Okay.
Since we have a lot more receipts coming in, it's not a big issue now. But as we continue with more expenses, it could be. And so just clarifying this just makes it easier for each department head to tell their staff this is the ordinance to follow.
Is there a dollar limit on the receipts that will be coming through like this or? I mean...
I mean, there's the allocated amounts that the council has set for, for each department head and the town manager to... for purchasing power.
Okay. I'm just curious, like if someone lost a big huge receipt for thousands of dollars, I mean...
Usually those can be recreated.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
These are the ones that can't be recreated, like you went for lunch.
Correct.
Right, so...
Parking or something like that.
Yeah, a lot of times it does have to do with training expenses when, you know, you have a group that goes out for training. Or if we have travel for anyone that needs to go...
When I talked to somebody on State Board, they were like, there were cities and towns spending more money on overtime or employee time trying to find a $5 receipt than just filling out an affidavit saying...
Yes, and that's that, yes, that.
Yeah, because they gave an example of one organization that spent like $1,500 in man hours trying to find a receipt for $1,995.
Oh, I get it. I just was curious if it was, you know, if someone come to you and say, "We lost a $6,000 receipt," if there would have to be any kind of proof that...
Well, hopefully...
Most of those things take purchase orders.
Yes.
Right.
And so the receipts are driven by, if I buy a pho meeting for the wastewater plant, it's not gonna be a lost receipt, it's gonna be a purchase order. I think that's why you're trying to ask.
Yeah, I think you're...
With an amount of that much, it's gonna be a supervisor, it's gonna be involved with the purchasing and the receipt wise. But like I said, the smaller amounts, I've had to drive over back out to Menards or something like that because one of my guys have inadvertently lost it in the truck, so...
Okay, yeah, so that's kind of my question, if it was just, you know, smaller amounts that we were concerned about.
Typically, and like...
Go ahead, what?
The president said that if my deputies or myself are spending an hour trying to track down a receipt, this really just helps the office continue to flow effectively.
Is there a report that we get for any missing receipt policy or beyond the month reports? If there's any above a certain amount?
There is not if the council's pleasure would be that.
I don't necessarily need it because I trust the judgment of you guys and the supervisors, but I didn't know if...
If there's any major issues, we would... I would definitely go to the town manager and he would be made aware of it too.
Why don't we let him handle it?
I'm good with... Then kick it up to us. I don't need it necessarily. I don't want to be the receipt police. But just if, if, yeah, I just didn't know based on Dan's questions. I'm okay with that one.
Well, I think if you have something, $50,000 receipt missing, we can't find it. That's probably gonna draw attention.
I'm more talking about if we have one employee conventionally always, it's like, wait a second.
It's personal action, yep.
The main ones honestly have been the gas receipts where we can't read them when we get them. And this just helps keep it moving along.
Yes. You find out after you pump the gas. No receipt paper. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for this? If not, we'll move on. Hear this at our next meeting. Moving now to ordinances on second reading, ordinance 24-27 fixing the salaries for 2025.
Yes, I have this as well. This has been before the council a coup... well, this is the second time. And then I also put next to you, I know that several of you had asked for the individual amounts. On the 2025 column for base and raise, I did want to make note that that does include that person's individual certifications. So you'll see on the salary ordinance where, like for example, on the first page in the planning and the adminis... the general fund administrative, it's 250 per certification. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention on the separate addendum that I have for you for each individual's 2025 salaries.
Questions from council?
I do have questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Has there been positions added to this salary ordinance since we, at the beginning when we saw it? Because the one I have that you had printed out when we were discussing it and then the one you sent recently, like there's a water superintendent?
So that has been on all the previous salary ordinances. And it's been included on the past salary ordinances as a position for the utilities to have someone in. It's not currently having anyone that's in that position. But it's always been in the past in case there was ever a need for a water superintendent. It just makes it easier to not have to amend it later on.
I just wondered because the one...
The position would come before the council, if that's what you're asking. Before it is filled, it would come before the council. I just wouldn't have to amend the salary ordinance and it's been in the previous ones.
Okay. I just wondered because the one printout I have from you that you broke down for me when we were previously talking about it at the beginning, doesn't have that listed, but then the one you sent through the email hasn't listed. And it has another, I think, position. I didn't have time to see all of it because I was trying to go back and forth with it. But I think like in planning, like the one I had had three positions, but this one you sent out listed four.
Well, because it's the Planning Tech Utilities Billing Clerk.
No, there was another one.
Part-time planning tech?
Yeah, part-time.
So the part-time planning tech was on the previous salary ordinance also. I just left it in there. I mean...
Okay.
In the planning budget, you... the budgets have not changed. This is just in the interim, for example. If the person that they've hired in the Planning Tech Utilities Billing Clerk, if something were to happen and she were to leave that position, it gives the opportunity for the planning that desperately needs somebody in there to, if they have money in their budget left, to hire the part-time planning tech.
Okay.
So all these were previously budgeted for?
Correct. The salary ordinance, and I did want to clarify this. So like, for example, um, let me see. The number, that's why I gave you the sheet that shows the exact position because the salary ordinance is not gonna match exactly because it gives some latitude to the supervisors depending on their budgets when they bring it before the council to bring a person that fits in that amount. Sometimes it'll be a little bit higher than the person that was previously in it or sometimes it could be lower. So I just expanded the amounts so that it gives it back to the supervisors to have more latitude when they bring someone to the council also. If someone were to leave the position.
Didn't we though change that once the... set in the budget and the salary ordinance that the town manager has the right to bring this person on? I thought we'd change that around where he could do it instead of coming to the council.
Anything except for police and fire because they have to come to us as the board safety.
So there's planning...
Or supervisors can hire part-time the way the current personnel policy reads. And then at the last meeting, Scott suggested that maybe we change it to read that all full-time employees and part-time employees could be hired by the supervisor and the town manager as long as there was money in the budget for that position.
Because if we've approved the position...
Right.
What do we care who fills it? Because quite frankly, all they do is bring a name before us.
Correct, but I'm just correcting what she said because it will not come back to the council.
As it stands now, because the council hasn't approved it, correct?
The open spots, if I can remember, because you and I would be the only two to remember this, like the water superintendent or whatever it is, that's currently filled by a contract employee. So that that spot remains hovering there because it was authorized by some council at some point and we've just never X'd it out. So it's gotta have some money assigned to it. That doesn't mean we're paying it because we're paying an employee as a contract employee to take that role rather than filling it with an internal employee.
Yeah, I understand all that. I just...
No, but you do, but somebody else might not.
So I was just making sure that we clarified that it will not come back to the council.
Well, we haven't passed that yet.
But once we pass this, she said it then when they find a job, it'll come back to council. That's not true.
Actually, currently as it stands right now, it would be true, right?
Correct.
Not for like the water superintendent and stuff like that because we haven't approved those. They're just hovering there. We've never approved filling those for the last, what, 20 years, Dan? Probably.
But I think she's talking about planning.
Yeah, the department she mentioned is the one I was talking about.
But it doesn't have an open hole right now, that's...
It's going to after this is...
The part-time planning tech slot is the only open one, but I don't have it in my budget.
Didn't... could we roll that planning tech into the utilities billing clerk?
Correct.
So there is no longer a planning tech. We have the planning tech billing clerk. There's not that part-time position still there.
But the salary ordinance still has it there.
Correct. And that is again, if the Planning Tech Utilities Billing Clerk left and Denise needed somebody and she was able to go through her resumes and hire somebody quickly for a part-time planning tech, that's why that would be in there because she wouldn't be able to have a planning tech in her budget if that full-time position is filled. But it's just so that we wouldn't waste any time having to go before the council for two meetings to get a part-time person in there to help her in her office. I can amend it if it's the council's pleasure to take that out, if you would prefer. I was just trying to be a little bit proactive in keeping some of the latitude with the town manager also because I knew that that was the pleasure of the council to come.
I don't see any reason to take a part-time planning tech off the menu.
I see what you're saying that way because to flip it around, the next person may not be also the utilities billing clerk.
Right.
So we'd have to have an update to the salary ordinance if we just wanted to do... This way it's in there hovering if we need to fill it, which it would need to go to the council currently.
We have several positions that we don't fill right now, but we have them in case circumstances change where we might want to hire somebody for it. It's easier to come and just...
Well, but let me interrupt you a second. They're already funded positions within the budget. You just haven't filled them yet.
Right. And there's most years, if, I mean, there's quite a few that we don't fill because it's not our purpose going forward. But there are, when things, circumstances change, it's like losing a planning tech. And if you have a part-time planning tech in there, you can just roll over and use that. And it's just, it's on the menu, but it's not necessarily being ordered.
But my understanding is that part-time planning tech, it's not, you wouldn't have four positions in planning. It's not to be able, it wouldn't give you latitude to hire another person because that right now, the funding for that's being used for the 112.02, the Planning Tech Utilities Billing Clerk, correct?
Correct.
So this would only default if this line, the 112.02, went out. Then it gives her latitude to just hire just for her department, not sharing it with utilities. Because right now this full-time position, part of it's paid from utilities.
Correct.
So if we're worried about the duplication, you want to remove that one?
No, no, no. No, leave that in there because right now, let's say for instance, that person did leave and she has someone that's great for a planning tech but has no billing information, what's... has no... She would have to come back to the council. We'd have to amend the salary ordinance with the planning tech there. So we don't have double positions funded. We just have double positions approved on the salary ordinance. Right? So if she decided to come and to hire a planning tech, it would be an unfunded position unless she got rid of the Planning Tech Utilities.
But I was just addressing Pam's concern with the legacy ones that are still on there. They're funded every year. We just never fill them because we don't need to because we have a contract employee that's taking that role.
It's not unlike in utilities or street department. We have labor ones, full-time, regular full-time employees that sometimes will not be able to fill those or won't want to fill them and will get a temporary full-time and will go to the menu and order up a labor one, TFT. And it has to be in there or we can't fill it. So it, like you said, it just hovers until we need it.
But the money's not hovering, just the position.
The salary ordinance does not cover the funding.
Exactly, that would be the budget. This is just saying the position.
Yeah, you're right. But by virtue of having both, if you, one fails and you could, if the funding moves over to like a TFT instead of an RF.
Exactly. Or if you say you want that utility clerk, full-time for utilities.
You're right. That's...
The position's created and on the sheet for a certain dollar figure, but it's not funded so they can't hire for it. Does that make sense?
No, actually it is.
No.
No, it's not.
So it was...
Next year's budget, we've already outlined what we're gonna pay for off that classifications. And if we wanted to deviate and go into the general fund and spend more money on an additional person, we'd have to come to you.
Well, no, what I'm saying is if the fund, if the person's gonna be funded from the allocations that we approved on the budget, then yes, the money is there.
No, but that's what I'm talking about. The ones on the sheet that are unoccupied right now?
Right.
Are not in the budget, but they're on the sheet so that if, say Jeff for whatever reason decides, "I want all the contract," he leaves. There's your water superintendent. Here's what you're paying. You run the...
So to be clear, that is a good way to explain it. So if Denise in planning, she has the Planning Tech Utilities Billing Clerk now. If she wanted to have an additional help and fill up, fill the part-time billing clerk, we don't have that in next year's budget. We would have to come to you and make a change.
But like I said, on the reverse, if that planning tech, if utilities wants to use that person full-time and says they don't have anybody, they can't share with planning, then the funding could be defaulted to that other...
We would just have to break it apart?
We would have to, yeah. But this way we don't have to break it apart. It's already there.
And I did leave...
It's already filed with the state.
Correct. The part-time billing clerk in the Department of Public Works under the same mindset as well in case the person who is filling the split position and we had to hire somebody in the utilities that didn't have planning experience because the utilities office also needs the help too.
I'm good with those, long as they're not funded and they're not. So the budget didn't fund these.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Open this up for public comment. Anyone? Seeing none, back to the council for action.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-27 fixing the salaries 2025.
Second.
Motion's second. Roll call please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swaffer?
No.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is ordinance 2024-28 to amend the UDO poll signs and exempt signs.
The council will recall that when the Unified Development Ordinance was before the council for passage, the council had some questions about poll signs. And I believe the consensus at the time was that the council was willing to entertain amendments to the UDO to allow for poll signs. So the purpose of this ordinance is to allow that amendment and also to clear up or to make it clear that the signs that the town council declared to be exempt from permits would also be exempt from the requirement to obtain a sign permit. So that's change number one. The other changes are to table 4.13 of the Unified Development Ordinance. And you have a copy of table 4.13 in front of you, which is the permitted permanent signs. If the council passes this ordinance, then there will be an amendment to that table which will allow for poll signs in the town in Ag C1, C2, Industrial 1, Industrial 2 with the limitations of 40 square feet per sign face and not to exceed 26 feet in height. And then there's some other stipulations which are on the right-hand side. But these pretty well match what was in the code previously. And then the next change with regard to poll signs is if we were going to put it in the table, we also had to add it in definitions under chapter 9.2. And a poll sign, if the council approves this amendment, will be defined as a sign that is mounted on a freestanding pole or other support so that the bottom edge of the sign is nine feet or more above grade, which was the previous definition. So this came before the Plan Commission at its last meeting and this passed unanimously, six to zero to come before, or the Plan Commission agreed unanimously to send this to the town council with a positive recommendation for passage.
Questions from council? Okay, I'll ask one. References, and what would be the, essentially the fifth paragraph down, shall be supported by not more than two supporting structures below the sign face, each of which shall not be more than 12 inches in width or depth. Explain what we're meaning by depth.
Where are you at, Scott? I'm sorry.
What would be essentially the fifth one down, the last sentence, shall be supported.
Okay.
Because again, is the... I know what I think you're trying to say. It can't be more than 12 by 12. But when we talk about depth, are we controlling how far they put the sign in the ground? Because a 26-foot sign's gonna need more than 12 inches.
I mean, no, it's not what I'm saying. I'm trying to say it's 12 by 12.
Seems to be a pretty small... So if you have a single pole, how big can that base be? And I guess the next question where you're looking at it up, are we intending to grandfather those that are already in existence? And would they be able to replace the sign facing as long as they don't touch the pole?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And also Scott, I'll just add to, the reason that the Planning Commission took a look at this is because when we switched the UDO over, we kind of lost all of our specifications for this.
Yeah, and I remember the discussion about it, I bet you guys did. Just, I'm kind of looking at this, reading it as a layman going, "Wait a minute, what does this mean?"
Yeah, I get that. I just wanted to make clear that that's what was going on, that the Planning Department, everything, and the planner, or the Planning Commission was looking at this and trying to think of everything. So yeah, bringing it back to you and catching it with different eyes, this is probably a lot of what's gonna happen over the next couple of years when we find things like this.
How far is, like along 46, do you know? Somebody may know. How far is their right-of-way alongside, DOT's right-of-way alongside each highway?
I think it's what, 50 feet from the center of the road?
It's more than that, yeah.
46.
Because both lanes lead up.
From the road center?
That would be the complete from edge to edge. I mean, from center line, I think it would be minimum 50 foot from center line if you want to consider the turn lane.
Like Jimmy John's right-of-way, and that's right-of-way is huge. So you're gonna see their sign back down the hill a little bit.
Right. It's at least 40 feet up the west curve or south curve.
Questions, comments?
I do on, yeah, 4.9, the sign standards permit required. Darla, in this, there were no changes to which signs we exempted, correct?
Correct. You're just stating because it wasn't clear, I think, in the UDO that the exempt signs were also exempt from the signed permit requirements. So that's the only focus of that.
Gotcha, okay.
To say if they're, they're not only exempt, they're really exempt.
Okay, yes. They're super duper double secret exempt.
So Scott, would maybe 12 by 12 sound better to you?
I'm just asking. I don't know. I mean, I...
I mean, I get what you're saying with width or depth, so maybe we should just say 12, 12 by 12 inches. Because that's pretty much what she's trying to state, right Denise? So if you want to take the width and depth out, I'm fine with that. So if you want to take the width and depth out, I'm fine with that.
All right. Either way, I just want to make it so people understand it and we all understand what we're about to approve or not approve.
Yeah, it's not just for us. It's about the next generation of us.
Would 12 by 12 sound better? I mean, pretty more.
Oh, I, I, I don't care. I just, we're not regulating the depth.
Right.
Right.
I, I would make a motion to amend it to 12 by 12.
So just so we're clear, because this is, the procedure that we're following is 36-7-4-607, which allows the council to amend the proposal, in which case it goes back to the Plan Commission. But you have to state the reasons for the rejection or the amendment. So on, on poll sign, on table 4.13, your only change is, at the bottom of the first page there, you're saying that shall not be more than 12.
Inches by 12 inches.
By 12 inches.
Yes. And the purpose is for clarification of the definition.
And is that the only change then?
As far as I see.
That is the only one I'm seeing right now.
Okay. So under the code, then, there can be a vote to pass it with that amendment. And if the Plan Commission accepts it, then it's done and it's considered passed as of this meeting with that amendment.
Okay. So there is a motion on the table, as I understand it. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
So motion is second. Whenever you're ready, you know.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
There is no old business before the council this evening. Under new business is the Emergency Management Advisory Council.
This was sent to me for council discussion from Chief Patton, who, I'm not sure if Chris wanted to speak on it or not.
Deputy Chief, do you want to say anything with this?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
I think the fire chief usually took that position for the advisory council. And then the deputy chief would play the, I guess, the proxy in his actions.
Do we know, does the chief want to do this?
Yeah, I think the fire chief's fine with continuing off that.
Okay. Council questions, comments? Is there any vote concerning this? The motion to appoint the fire chief to the Emergency Management Commission.
Just the fire chief?
The fire chief with the deputy chief as the proxy, should he be? Or his, his assignment.
Okay.
Yeah, so he fills out the paperwork. If I am in for him as a proxy. So the one thing I guess we'd be asking about is just the one position for him.
Should we do proxies for anybody else on the?
No, this is usually handled by either the appointed person or his designee, his or her designee, for a brief period of time. Say, again, we have someone out injured, out sick. Okay, they will accept someone in their stead. It doesn't necessarily, at least in the past, it has not had to be formalized. It was just understood that this is the Ellisville representative. I mean, sure, there would be a question. It would go back to the designated representative, but I don't think for one meeting or so it would be that big a deal.
So Darla, is this something we need to actually formalize? Because if so, we probably would need to do with the other.
I serve on different boards and I can send a proxy without doing anything. So I don't think we need to do the proxy part of it. And is this board elected every year, right?
It's not elected. It's, it's a, it's a standing committee that is filled by various positions across the county from the emergency management, or emergency management, emergency services organizations.
Which the chief's been part of, though, correct?
Yes. I believe the last two fire chiefs were appointed to the, and I know that Jim Davis did it in 20, 30 years. He was the representative for Ellisville constantly. But there are occasions when other people would have to fill in briefly.
Sure. So was there a motion? I'm sorry.
If you want to make it, we'd accept it.
I move we make chief, or the fire chief, Emergency Management Advisory Council and/or his designee.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is a discussion on the interlocal agreement for animal control.
I included the email that came from the city of Bloomington. Somehow, the Emergency Management Advisory got in between there. I apologize for that. It should be the last page of your packet that has the breakdown. She said, Alex, that she would have the interlocal agreement. I asked her if she would send it to Darla first. She has her contact information. And this was just for discussion because the email that came through asked.
What did we pay last year?
So last year, we paid 20, or $25,555. And that was at 297 per animal. And so the cost per animal has gone up, but they have it projected for the total number of animals at 74. So our actual interlocal cost is going to go down to the $23,158.30.
We already budgeted how much this year?
For the budget, we budgeted 28,350 because I didn't have any reference points.
Yeah.
So.
Questions or discussion from council? Because I, we've already put it in the budget. I don't know that there's anything more to do with it other than it's a, it's a continual agreement. So Darla, do you want to vote to continue with this or do we need that since it's an interlocal agreement?
I think you should wait till you have the actual agreement.
Okay.
Okay.
So, and I, I have not seen that yet from Alex. When I left the office today, I did not.
She did mention that the likelihood of getting it for this meeting would be unlikely. I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention since she did ask to put it on your radar.
So the numbers may be a little bit off, but we're not going to see it probably jump quite a bit.
It's actually less.
Yeah.
No, I'm talking about when the actual MOU comes through, the agreement.
Maybe.
Or will it be based on these numbers?
It's usually based on these numbers.
Okay.
We get the same format email every year.
Okay. All right.
We usually are shooting in the blind when we do our budgets because they don't have a projection themselves and.
Good job on everybody for appropriating enough. Thank you.
Okay. Being that there's no further business, now we move to privilege of the floor. Anyone having business for the council not part of our regular agenda? Please step forward, identify yourself, sir. You have three minutes.
Scott Reynolds. You may know that I've raised some questions about some of this rezone activity and annexation activity on the West Side. You may also know that I'm an attorney because I disclosed that before. But what I'm not is an attorney who was involved in developing a $69 million tech park myself in Bloomington, which is a statement that was made on the record at last week's Plan Commission meeting by the plan director. Normally, I wouldn't use this venue to push back on something like this, but because the statement came from a town official in a recorded public meeting given as a matter of fact, not up for debate, but as simply a fact, and it was gratuitous and irrelevant to the topic at hand, I felt I had to correct it on the record. I emailed about this immediately on Saturday, but I received no response. So you can understand why this would be important because the statement would, you know, could lead some to believe that I may have ulterior motives for having asked the questions that I've asked and raised the attention that I've raised. Let me say for the record, I don't develop real estate of any kind. In this case, I'm just interested in transparency and accountability, responsible use of our community resources and making sure people are fully informed. Second thing, speaking of transparency, I submitted a few public records requests back in October related to the rezone and the two annexations. Felt that was the easiest way of just getting my complete request out there and, and then allowing the plan director to get back to me with the full file and just one and done. But it's now been, I submitted the request for the annexations on October 11th, so it's now been more than a month. I know there's been some concern that there are misunderstandings by the public about what's been going on and what's been discussed and the transparency, but I think the best way to dispel any misconceptions that may exist is simply to be transparent. I remember in the last meeting that I attended virtually, I think it was Mr. Farmer who actually, I appreciate what he said at the end of the meeting, which is invited people to engage and ask questions because transparency was the desire. But we're 15 days later from that meeting and I still have gotten no response. So obviously, you know, filing a complaint with, with Luke Britt, who's the Public Access Council, would be the next step, but I don't want to do that. I just would like the file and it's not, it shouldn't be that large and it should be easy to get. So I hope they receive that soon and I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else having business for the council not part of the normal agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to council comments. I'm sorry, yeah, council comments and we'll come back to supervisor comments. Anyone?
I'm good today.
I'd like to congratulate the Edgewood Martine Band again.
Yes.
State champions. It's awesome.
That is becoming quite the dynasty.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
It's three in a row and then winter percussion is three in a row or four in a row. So yeah, they, they've definitely got their program. Now we'll move back to supervisor comments, beginning with town manager.
One more round for the council.
Anyone? Anyone have further business? Meeting stands adjourned.